I called order the Westlake City Schools regular board meeting for Monday, September twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-five. Roll call.
Call to order six oh five P M. Mr. Kraft.
Here.
Here not.
Here.
Panukin.
Here.
Lam.
Brother.
Lozinski.
Here.
Would you please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge to be the flag of the United States of America and for the Republic of America. One nation under God, and in its law, with liberty and. As we gather tonight, we recall our mission. We educate for excellence, powering all students to achieve their educational goals, to direct their lives, contribute to society. As well as our vision, Westlake City School District will provide a dynamic, student-centered learning environment. Our district will be characterized by high achievement, actively engaged learners, mutual respect, shared knowledge, pursuit of new skills and capabilities, collaborative learning, willingness to take action, a team commitment to data-driven continuous improvement through a strategic planning process, tangible results. Thank you for joining us tonight, those in front of me, as well as those online. I move to approve the agendas there.
Second.
Second. Discussing. Roll call. Correct? Yes.
Panukin.
Yes.
Lam.
Yes.
Lozinski.
Yes.
Here not.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're gonna move right into recognitions and informative reports. Dr. Goggins, the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you very much. Um, report is, we are in full swing. Uh, kids are back, staff's back, buses are rolling. Sports are happening. Everything is, is uh, in motion in our buildings. It goes by very quickly. We are already at homecoming week. Um, this is a, a lot of fun just watching it, what's happening in the buildings. Spirit days today was monochrome day at Westlake High School. I did not know what that was, but I guess monochrome day is where you dress all in the same color. Um, so that I saw pictures uh, on parents' square about that seemed to be a lot of fun and Mrs. Williams, it was PJ day today. That's.
Is it brown?
Uh, it's not spirit day.
It's upcoming Thursday, which is always exciting. Our alumni association having a beautiful night recognizing uh, some prestigious alumni from Westlake High School. We have our homecoming parade, our game, uh, our football game and the rose arch all on Friday, which is fun and our dance on Saturday. Tonight is the Powderpuff game at the, at Westlake. Oh, it's delayed? Oh, okay. Well, it was supposed to be tonight, but um, the point is uh, schools are open, a lot of fun happening, big week this week. Um, the only other thing I'd like to mention is uh, the behind the W should have hit your mailboxes this weekend. Hopefully you had a chance to look through that. We're very happy with the product. Uh, thank you to all who contributed. Katie Eason was a huge part of that. Um, being able to put that together. Uh, we believe it's informational. Um, and you know, our goal with that is typically to whether you want to call it, um, pulling back the curtain or opening the doors of our school, uh, our schools in order for our community to be able to see what's behind the W, what's happening, um, who are the people involved, what are the good things that are going on? And even some parts, we make sure we put a financial part in there as well, which I think uh, presented very well. So, um, hopefully people are getting a lot out of it and getting to see inside our schools. Um, other than that, I'll just go through my agenda items when.
Super. Thank you. Any questions or thoughts for Dr. Goggins?
I just had one thing, uh, Dr. Goggins, uh, on the academic services report that you sent out last week. Uh, if you need any extra hands uh, to help out with the Lego education, don't hesitate.
Yeah.
Like Lego master, like more than here going.
There may be, you know, better tools.
And what I, but I will say, I'm glad to brought that up because you know, Amanda and Paul Academic Services, they've really put a focus on getting hands-on things for kids and um, they started the tech education in the elementary school. Um, a few years ago, but building on that and actually being able to do the, the hands-on Lego component because a big, a big thing that we try and balance is screen time. Um, a lot of parents, when they send their kids to school, they, they want them to learn uh, about technology, but they want us to be mindful of screen time. And so we think that uh, that that Lego component is really good and it, and it, and it fits inside what we're doing with problem solving and that sort of thing. And then hopefully building into our project lead, lead the way programs that just started this year as well. But I agree, it looks like a lot of fun. Um, and but there's definitely structure behind it as well.
Yeah. Anything else for Dr. Goggins? Mr. Hopkins, Treasures.
Thank you, Mr. Kraft. Um, I do have a little bit of uh, to go through tonight, so try to share. So we have available for people who watch online. So uh, we, we spoke a little bit at our last meeting uh, about things that are going on within the state right now, uh, or changes that were in effect with the budget bill. And one of those changes is the forecast. Um, our forecast has traditionally been a five-year forecast. And uh, way back yonder, a good couple decades ago, it was done in October and May. They then moved it uh, about eight to ten years ago to November and May. So we do the forecast in November and, and updates in May. Now, uh, they made changes to the forecast, so we'll call it a financial forecast instead of a five-year forecast because it's only four years going forward. And um, and instead of doing it in November, um, moving forward, it will be required to be done in August and February instead of November and May. And this year, because the implementation, obviously August is well past, uh, so this year it has to be uh, reviewed and board approved no later than October fifteenth. So this is our regular meeting, our last regular meeting before October fifteenth. I do have a forecast here for the board to review tonight. Um, I know I've done through, I've gone through some PowerPoint presentations in the fa- in the past. Um, I think I'm just gonna walk through it a little bit and talk about the forecast. We had a, a great meeting uh, with my finance committee, the treasurer committee uh, for finance uh, with a couple of board members and uh, worked through uh, worked through the forecast, but we'll go through it here with the full board. If you have questions, please speak up and step in. Um, for people uh, out in YouTube world, um, this information may be small on your screen. Uh, it is available on our board doc website publicly shared, both the forecast and my assumptions. Um, I always say that you really can't understand the forecast without looking at the assumptions. So uh, you know, if you're gonna take the time to look at the forecast, I strongly encourage you to look at the assumptions as well. Uh, if at the very least, it will help you fall asleep at night. Uh, well, as we look at the forecast here, the forecast broken down in not two sections. You have your actual uh, debt. We have three years of actual data. So our fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five. And then we have our forecasted data. Uh, fiscal year twenty-six is the year that we are currently in, that we started on July first of this year. And then three additional full years, uh, fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Um, as I typically go through this, revenue is a piece that I uh, generally use to not forecast. Uh, revenue's a, a tough piece and I don't want to go driving around the community looking for renovations, new construction and try to get that what that value that may bring. Uh, I focus more on what taxes we actually collect uh, and what's on our tax duplicate. So going forward, uh, I try to tell the, the board where I'm uh, conservative at and you know, revenue as I'm generally going to be conservative. I won't count it on the forecast until we actually see uh, the tax money coming in. So this forecast here, you'll see our revenue uh, going down this fiscal year from last year slightly by about uh, a half million dollars in the first line, which is uh, property taxes, uh, and then slightly increasing each year by a very anemic uh, point five percent annual increase. Um, our next line that has cash value in there is our unrestricted uh, state grant aid. This is your foundation funding. It's really combined with the two, both your unrestricted uh, state grant aid and your restricted state grant aid. Uh, as they require some of the money that comes into foundation to be restricted money specifically for poverty-based assistance. Uh, and there's another uh, one that we, we put money in, but it's directed by the state. And so when we look at that uh, around the three, or I'm sorry, the four point three million, uh, this year was around four point five million. I'm using the first foundation payment here in uh, this full year, the first one in December uh, that uh, to make those estimates off. That may increase slightly. Uh, I don't think it will really decrease. Uh, it is based on our enrollment. Our enrollment's a little bit uh, different than last year, but it doesn't have a major change. So you know, I kind of see that same again. I'm putting in a little bit of uh, cushion there uh, or, or a little underestimating in there from this past year. Additionally, when we apply for catastrophic cost reimbursement, this is money that we spend uh, specifically for students with high exceptional. And so it may be a student who's required to go to a uh, place to add the autism school, some type of autism school. Uh, we can apply for some reimbursement. Last year, we applied for well over a million dollars worth of expenses. We got a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. So it's not a huge amount of money that comes back. Um, but it is some, uh, and I hold that number much lower because it can vary each year. That's just on our expenses. The pot of money is set by the state. They don't tell us what it is. And then it's based, uh, what we receive is based on what everyone else, including us, uh, put in for reimbursement. If the pot doesn't change, they just divvy it up based on the number of people who put in and, and what they're expensive for. We move down uh, to the next line uh, with a tax value in there. We have our state reimbursement for property tax credit. This is the homestead rollback, homestead exemption. Um, it, it can vary each year. Uh, it does not have, I can essentially put any number in there as long as it balances with the first number of our property tax. Those two lines together are what we get certified in property taxes from the county. Whether the state puts it in as a reimbursement for a property tax credit or it's received directly from the homeowner, we receive it from one of those. And then finally is our other revenue and other, all other revenue has a combination of pieces, uh, everything from when people ask about pay to participate, where does it go? This is where it goes into a general fund. Uh, this can be our tip agreement uh, through the city for American greetings and that uh, block K property over at Crocker Park. Uh, this is also where interest income goes in. And one of the uh, significant drop that we've seen uh, over the past couple of years, um, is interest income and I projected decreasing again uh, this year. While our overall uh, cash flow, our overall uh, financial picture is similar. So the money we have in the bank is similar to what we had last year. It's not a huge drop. Uh, with interest rates projected to go down, we've already seen a quarter of a decrease uh, last week. I have a general feeling we're gonna see another one before the end of the year. Um, and you're probably going to see another one or two even before the end of this fiscal year. Um, I could be off on that. That's just, these are my assumptions. Uh, so if you disagree with that, I fully understand, but that's where I've kind of built in there. Seeing some decreasing in our interest income, uh, that is based on, on the market. Um, while things considered, we're looking at this year having uh, revenue of fifty-eight point six million coming in when we consider returning some advances that I'm asking the board to return tonight. Uh, and some other revenue that, that uh, comes in because of the way things have receded, it's fifty-nine point three million dollars for this year. The next part, the next section of the forecast really breaks down into our expenditures. Expenditures, I try very much to be as accurate as possible. So there is not a whole lot of play built into our. Um, our, the, the first and foremost, we, we want to reiterate this over and over again. We are a people business. We do not make widgets. We educate to. And in order to do that, we need to have faculties. Okay. And so the vast majority of our uh, expenditures are for uh, uh, for salary benefits. And so when we look at that piece, that's where your money is tied up in, uh, and rightfully so tied up there. Because again, we are educating students. We are not making widgets. So when you look at our uh, salary benefits, we're looking at a salary increase uh, this year uh, between a negotiated increase, step increases. Uh, I project them to be around four and a half percent. That is what our three-year average is. Uh, benefits are up uh, about nine hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that tied directly to eleven percent increase that were uh, have been notified through, it's really twelve percent uh, increase that uh, been notified through uh, S H D, our consortium, sort of an health consortium of the increase in uh, healthcare costs. Um, so that's gonna drive a lot of that. Um, going forward, you'll see that I continue into next year, roughly another four and a half percent increase in uh, stellar in salaries. But benefits are going at eleven percent increase uh, each year, and that may be small. Uh, again, last year I carried eleven, it came in at twelve this year. Uh, benefits are, are tough right now. Benefits are very, very tough.
What, what have they said to you in your, in meetings you've had? And sorry.
Uh, I mean, when we sit around at our, our meetings, we have not only the school districts that are, are part of the district, we have our um, consultant uh, from a third partner who we contract with. We have Anthem who is our uh, healthcare provider. Uh, and then we have Express Drive to us, our current, our. Um, what we're overall hearing is, you know, two things are driving our healthcare call.
Overall.
Overall. Two things are, are driving and remember, we're in a pool of all this. It's not broken down for what?
Right.
It's just well seventeen districts that are just paid fifteen thousand souls on the plan roughly. Okay. And so when we look at that, they're saying that usage is driving it. Okay. So uh, and we, we know during the pandemic, people stopped going, people stopped using elective coverage. Uh, we know, I know we're a few years out of pandemic now, but we saw that really starting back up in around twenty-two as people started going back uh, uh, to appointments, started uh, going back to elective procedures. Um, or elected up for procedures. Um, and then inflationary. Uh, those are your two driving factors. The other piece that when we look at prescription uh, cost increasing is they've made some breakthroughs that provide a uh, really some life-altering benefits to people, but the cost is insane. So um, that's really where you're finding your, your increase in cost. Uh, overall, our F H D runs on around ninety to a hundred million dollars a year uh, for health, for all of seventeen districts. Um, uh, you know, when you have a uh, prescription that costs a half million dollars a year, uh, but it's doing some sort of genetic therapy, it's can be life-altering for that individual, but you know, a half million dollars a year for one uh, one person, one prescription is a large hit to a even a hundred million dollar uh, program like we have.
When it's a usage, more people using it basically.
Uh, don't say many people. Uh, usage can either be, you know, when you think more people, you're thinking more people on the planet, but it could be, you might be using it more. You as an individual may be using it. And so whether it's more people using it or more individuals using it more, um,
Either.
You know, it's being used.
Is the uh, the ratio of claim, claims stay about the same?
Um, I would have to go back and look. Uh, I know the claim costs are up and again, that's a lot of that is inflationary increases. Um, and you say. You know, it, it's, I will tell you, we, we, it, it came a little, it be, it was alarming to me the other day. I was watching the news and Metro Health, they had a story about Metro Health uh, on Fox eight news uh, talking about their struggling with the increase in cost of healthcare for their employees. And I sat and I thought about that for a minute. Okay. And I'm like, if they're the healthcare provider and it's overwhelming for healthcare and then they're cutting back on their free services that they're providing because of the cost of healthcare has gone up somewhat. I'm not, if, if the healthcare providers are complaining, what are we to do as just, you know, you, you do with the healthcare program? And so healthcare right now is in a, in a challenging.
Yeah, but the salary side is our biggest uh.
Healthcare alone runs us around uh, eight to nine million dollars a year.
Yeah. It's a, the consortium looking at any ways potentially reduce costs or.
So we've changed.
They're always gonna.
We, we talked a little bit, um, you know, last year, last year we changed from Medical Mutual to Anthem uh, in hopes of reducing some of our costs. These we've seen a uh, not necessarily reducing uh, uh, cost, but we've seen a slowing of the growth. Okay. And then this year, uh, the consortium just voted on uh, changing uh, specific January first, our prescription drug provider from the drug script to uh, Smith R. And so we are looking, actively looking for ways to control costs as much as we can. Uh, but as a consortium, uh, you know, we're limited on how we can.
So when will the president's pledge to reduce drug costs by about, that's where I go with that? Can you do that in July?
I, I am not aware of that having an effect on ours. But we are, you know, I will say uh, F H D uh, in their due diligence, uh, looked at several uh, R X provider. Um, we made the decision uh, with Smith R X based on uh, both the import interview with the Smith R X team as well as a follow-up with uh, other Smith R S X customers who are of similar size to our consortium. Um, Smith R X is more aggressive in their uh, in their work to reduce drug costs, including uh, working with uh, importing international uh, drugs. So uh, that's something that's not currently being done and may have an impact for us. You know, we'll see how that plays out. So we, we do feel we have the provider that will be more aggressive in helping reduce.
Well, having served in for any part of that Westlake, I appreciate uh, your diligence on it because I know that it's ever-changing and you're on top of it for it. So thank you.
It, it's, it's a struggle and, and Mr. Mavor here, uh, you know, runs our benefits for the district, is part of that uh, F H D consortium meeting. Uh, it's, it's a challenge. There's no way.
I'm curious, there's seventeen districts in the consortium. Uh, are, are there other consortiums around or the other districts are just on their own?
No, there's a, a number of consortiums. Yeah, there are different ways you can uh, find healthcare. Uh, we do it through a consortium. You can be self-insured. Uh, some of your larger districts are self-insured. Um, I think.
You see.
I believe Westlake was self-insured at one point. Uh, you can be fully insured. Fully insured is going to an insurance company and saying, here, give us price insurance. You know, if you're, if the costs are, exceed that, that's on the insurance company. If they, you know, if they don't exceed that, it's a company that's not money. Um, you don't get a reason. Um, there are odds, a council of government is another type of consortium. Uh, so there's several ways that you can, you know, try to find healthcare. We've looked at uh, other uh, consortiums. We've looked at the possibility of, of changes within our own consortium, again, trying to find what's in our best interest. Uh, right now we feel uh, F H D staying with F H D uh, is in our best interest. Uh, but we have looked at those other.
Regarding personnel services for particularly staffing, you do not build in any retirements, if I'm correct?
I generally do not. Um, now some of it, um, an example of step increases, I can use a uh, two percent increase. That's not always the case. Some people are stepped out, some step are at higher uh, ratio. So by not building in retirements, uh, it, it keeps a little bit of a cook.
Thank you.
Um, moving on from salary and benefits, uh, your next major part is uh, food services. Um, and this can be a whole host of items from uh, students, we, we may need to pay tuition for to out, outplace them uh, due to their special need. It can, uh, one of the biggest causes where last year, we spent a little over nine hundred thousand dollars on electricity. Um, you know, your utilities are all built into there. Um, anything, any type of service, maybe if we need something repaired, we can bring a contractor in. Any type of service that you pay for uh, is one we built into this uh, seven point five million is what it has. And then your last two lines uh, are your supplies, materials and then your uh, equipment. I generally combine them and in my something, you'll see I can combine them. Uh, but your uh, supplies and materials are a little higher uh, this year than in the past. Um, going farther back, if, if the board uh, will note back in fiscal year of twenty-three, we started the re, reintroduction of textbook adoptions. And then uh, again in twenty-four and twenty-five, we're continuing that here in twenty-six uh, and certainly twenty-seven. Um, and then I think we're done with the adoption after twenty-seven, Mr. Wilson. Is that about right? Uh, but we'll then figure out when we're gonna time the next, you know, starting it over again, or do we have a break in there again as well? So we'll work on that. But I have it uh, going forward for your supplies and materials. And then your equipment uh, is other equipment that could be uh, equipment for classroom, could be equipment that purchased as part of a textbook adoption. That's certainly our to um, educational uh, technology. Uh, the doctor's gray overseas. Uh, that's a number of pieces. And then finally, as you go down a little farther, I use a nine hundred thousand dollar number uh, for uh, this, your other object. It's gonna be, the majority of this is the cost of collecting tax. So when tax are collected, we get charged by the county uh, to do that by the auditor, by the county auditor's office, county treasurer's office, uh, a number of pieces there uh, in order to fund their operations. So that kind of falls in there as well. And it varies each and every year. Uh, when we're on the ballot for uh, like this year, we have uh, board elections. So we, the district pays a portion of the election cost, so it, it gets thrown into that lineup. Um, you're looking at about six point, or I'm sorry, sixty-four point eight five million dollars in expenditures for this year. Um, we have advances and transfers in there as well, uh, that show a total of sixty-four point nine uh, two five million, just under sixty-five million dollar but uh, a plan budget for this year. Um, as we discuss at each of these uh, uh, conversations, I try to be conservative in my numbers. Uh, right now it's projecting a five point five million dollar deficit. Uh, I'll be honest, I don't think we will do that. But we did deficit spend last year by a little over a million dollars. Uh, and I do expect fully to uh, deficit spend again this year. Uh, most likely, if you had to pin me against the wall and uh, for a number, I'd probably say in that three to four million dollar mark. Uh, but we are now uh, crossed over uh, into deficit spending and we will, you know, uh, continue to do that unless we make some changes. Uh, last year, when you're looking at this uh, here, you'll see that last year we ducked the spent uh, by eleven million dollar. As a reminder, uh, the Board of Education uh, under my recommendation, moved ten million dollars to a uh, continuous improvement fund uh, for capital improvements. I'm sorry, not continuous, a capital improvement fund for uh, capital improvements, future capital improvements. Uh, that's currently sitting over in a separate fund, your O seventy fund, zero seven zero. Your forecast generally just your, your, your one blind. And so it shows that expense, but we didn't definitely spend by eleven million last year. We did a transfer of uh, uh, ten million over to that continuous improvement, uh, the capital improvement fund. And so we were about a million dollars deficit. Each year going forward, we're gonna show uh, deficit spending uh, on the forecast. Ultimately, the bottom line shows us in the black this year, next year, and then negative for the final two years of the forecast. When we take into uh, consideration that capital improvement fund, if the board would choose to rescind uh, all or part of it, uh, that would have a significant impact on where our numbers are. Uh, but uh, your final year, you're going to be, you know, in the negative no matter what. Uh, as we look and we talk about, you know, options that are available, uh, you know, generally speaking, there's only two ways you can fix budget options. You either raise your revenue or reduce your expenses. That's just the way it happens. So when we look at uh, revenue, we have not successfully passed an operating levy since two thousand and six. Um, you're not going to be on the ballot this year in November. It can't happen at this point. Uh, so you're looking at uh, twenty years from the last time that you passed would be the minimum amount of time because you passed in May of two thousand and six. So your next opportunity could be on the ballot of May of uh, twenty twenty-six or November of twenty twenty-six. Uh, at this time, that would not be my recommendation at all. Okay? Um, and I would be looking uh, possibly depending on how. Um and I would be looking possibly depending on how things play out this official year. Uh possibly in calendar year twenty seven would be the earliest I would consider uh being on the ballot.
But that's assuming no major changes from the State House.
Well, the State House is going to be a huge factor in these. Uh so let's so miss the yet why? So. Because of the outside political party. Okay, uh I'm not sure it would be wise to be on the ballot next. Okay, we don't know what the State House is going to do. Uh the State House has eighteen months to veto. Or I'm sorry, override the veto, override the vetoes of the governor. So you have through next calendar year, essentially, your calendar year twenty six. To override the vetoes to the governor, which included that forty percent cap on carryover balances. Um you also have, and these are rumors and rumblings, so I'm going to pack them on. I'm not saying it will happen, but. You also have a movement out there uh about putting a repeal of all property taxes on the ballot. In in November of twenty six. So I'm not sure it would be prudent uh to be on the ballot in twenty six. That's just my feelings on it. Of of course, to be on the ballot, uh it takes uh two votes of the Board of Education uh to be on the ballot, but I don't think. Um. I I don't feel it's prudent to be on the ballot in calendar year twenty six. And again, we've got.
It will also be even more expensive because of midterms.
Yes.
Um yeah.
You know, you've got a a lot going on in in twenty twenty six there. I just don't feel it would be prudent. And and we do have, we're still carrying cats, so even though we're deficit spending, I I think we can put that off. And then we can get a feel for what it would look like, and we should have a better understanding of the political climate in twenty seven. So. Uh at that point, you're talking about a new uh a biennial budget uh in the. Middle of of calendar year twenty seven, so it would give us a better idea of what we're facing.
It the citizen initiative to just get rid of property taxes. We feel that that's gonna have.
It's still active.
Still active.
They're collected.
For sure.
For sure.
Yeah. And you've had uh meetings.
Tomorrow.
No, I'm sorry, Wednesday is one. It'd be interesting to hear from Alliance. And what they remember. What is the uh, what are the feelings of that, you know, about that issue? Does it have legs?
A lot of people would love to not have property taxes.
And it's an easy, it's an easy, yes, I want any more property taxes.
But as we have talked about it, the ramifications of that are. Enormous.
And that just.
Not just for us.
Right, right. So which then next to say if they. So they get it, so that's my solution.
How do people think they're gonna fund?
They're gonna have other potentials.
And I think that, I mean, I did in talking to just. I don't know if anybody has that answer.
Yeah. Is we don't, there's so much uncertainty, we won't know how to react to it until.
That's the point Todd was making is that we can, we get to, we're gonna do this, 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 but then the 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 lance to thunder is gonna be tipped so much.
Right.
That all the planning that we put in can be completely upended. But the good news is, we do have. Carryover balance. We do have time to be able to kind of let, kind of see who's who, you know, kind of let everything kind of shape out.
Definitely here, I know there are, there are districts are on the ballot here in November. There are districts that will be on the ballot next year in May and November. Uh I am grateful that we do not have to be on the ballot. Uh again, the board may choose to be, but we don't have to be. We're we're in, we're in a good place right now uh to really weather the storm. Uh and see where it comes out. Uh and that is the the good.
As you meet with the alliance, it'll be interesting to see that, you know, what's what's the barometer of uh the uh no property taxes route? Um also, what's the barometer um uh turning over, say, the veto uh issue? So the agents here to have with that. I'm I'm coming back to this.
Yep.
And I agree with you, we are a people business and um eliminate, you know, the the people equation is really too uh less than what we do as a district. So I don't. I I think that's a a tough one to uh to kind of wrestle with. Looking at purchase services, and I know that this is an extreme example, but I'll try to quickly paint it, you know, where I'm coming from. I work in a Cleveland building on Public Square that uh had been on the books, um say, pre-COVID at eighty million and sold. A year and a half ago for forty million. And the tough part of that is, wow, eighty million dollars is now worth forty million. But. The good of that is you you start to see a floor in place, but it's too real. And then to the, obviously, you could look at as well, guys, they have they have windfall, they paid forty million bucks for an eighty million dollar piece of property. And the improvements in this building are just unbelievable. Uh it it has to be, what, the Huntington Building, the old BP Building is what, thirty years long?
Oh, I think it wasn't that.
Okay.
BP.
Uh but the improvements that they're making, and it's interesting to see what this new owner is doing. Um lots of improvements all in place to try and save money. Uh with lighting and HVAC and all those types of things. So what am I getting at? When I look at the purchase services that that. You know, larger item on uh the forecast. And do we ever say uh uh a Todd Hopkins and a a Mr. House getting together and I don't know if it's to to hire a contracted entity and engineer. To where can we really try to save on purchase services? Does that, does that make any sense or no?
It does, and I'm happy to look through those. Now, let me, you know, one piece here is of. It's a a a good portion of your purchase services uh do fall uh under our special tuition. Okay? Now, we made the business decision, I made the business decision a few years ago. Uh to have Mrs. Perry charge those types of things to our general fund. And then we are using our grant funds to offset salaries for uh teachers or aides uh that are in the class. Now, we can reverse that, okay? We can reverse that, and what it will do is that will just drive your salaries up inside your purchase service. Another, a large uh portion of the purchase services is substitute. Okay, we spend, I want to say about a half million dollars a year, uh a little more last year uh on substitute teachers. Now. We do, we we contract with the E S C to provide or hire substitute services, whatever it is through the E S C, uh to provide substitute. We don't have to do that. We could hire them in-house and pay as a salary and benefits, increasing our salary benefits and reducing our purchase services. So. Some of the pieces of purchase services are a little. It may, you know, we can, I can very easily say, hey, I can cut a million dollars off of that, you know, tomorrow, but you're gonna see it go into your salaries benefits instead. When we look at our uh our buildings, we are fortunate that, you know, three of our four uh school buildings are relatively new. Uh have newer HVAC systems, newer uh lighting system. Uh we have had conversations, Mr. House and I have had conversations about, you know, are we uh, you know, can we reduce uh, can we? Change the time when lights turn on? Okay, so if we're currently turning them off at five o'clock at night, and you know, it's four o'clock more appropriate. Turn them off at four o'clock, and then they're also on motion, so if someone walks walk through, we turn on, you know, do we change the timing of some of the lighting? Now, to be honest with you, when we look at a million dollar electric bill or nine hundred thousand dollar electric bill, uh lighting is not your primary driver. Uh HVAC, okay? And so what people may not realize is uh the way our HVAC system work. Uh and the way all newer HVAC systems work is uh you run your air conditioning, you're in. Okay, so let me stress that again. You run your air conditioning, you're in, okay? That's different than your home. I'm pretty familiar in your home. You're not running your air conditioning in the middle of winter. Uh but the way that uh our systems work with what's called uh B A V boxes, variable airflow uh boxes that we have. Um you heat a certain amount of air and you push it into classrooms, but then because different areas will be hotter or colder, hotter than other areas. You then cool them, cool off part of it as well. So you're running your air conditioning to balance your building. We're not. A single room, we have these massive hundreds of thousands of square foot buildings. Um and so both your heat and your air conditioning is is working. So. Uh you know, we've talked about possible ways of looking at at trying to be more efficient um uh with our utilities. Uh we are looking at that. Uh I'm sure that's something even at Capitol Conference, we can talk to some vendors down there uh who may be able to do a formal study on it to see where. There's that potential for it, but uh we are having ongoing conversations. Um so, you know, are there areas that we can save? But. Purchase services is a little bit even because uh there are, we've moved things into it. Uh and I believe for the right reasons, we've moved into it. But even if we change out of there, it will just shift.
Right.
That expense somewhere else.
So what I'm hearing is, you know, and and I think we all hear what's coming out of uh Columbus, and it and it seems pretty drastic. And again, we have yet to. It's going to come to fruition and that. Yeah, uh but we're, e- even though we see this potentially coming, we're we're about as lean potentially as we can get.
Um I will certainly tell you that I believe that under Dr. Goggins' leadership and the administrative team that's put together. Uh under uh the leadership of Mr. House, the Business Office, uh we are looking for ways uh to uh reduce our costs. Uh in a way, though, that doesn't have a negative impact on the education that's provided. So, you know, uh if you want to be more lean, uh you can, but you're going to impact educational opportunities. And so it's that's the decision that uh the district could work without debate. Uh but we look for ways, and and this year as an example is uh, I think your uh the Dover campus or the uh uh middle school maybe. Went down a a couple of teachers in in uh in that campus there as our enrollment changed a little bit and it allowed the the teaming approach to go to a two-person team there. Um we are looking for those opportunities uh when they make sense and in ways that do not impact uh the educational opportunities in a negative fashion. Thank you.
Yeah, go back to the uh the citizen initiative. So. If this citizen initiative was actually to go through and get on the ballot and be voted on. Is there anything that we, that legislature would be able to potentially do, either stop it? The reason I I mentioned it is. In the Constitution, it talks about the entitlement that is required, part of the Constitution.
So I I have not read the citizen initiative.
Oh.
What I have, what I can pull or what I have read about it is they are seeking a constitutional amendment.
Okay.
To outlaw uh property.
Okay, well, it would override what's going to be in there.
That's my understanding, and your legislative body would have no ability.
That's right.
To change because it would be part of the Constitution. That's different than like a citizen system regarding marijuana. You know, the the uh that has left the legislators to still make some decisions on discrepancies and and rules surrounding it. Um a constitutional amendment would be different. Now, I could be off on that. I've not read what the, uh I've not been approached to sign it. I know other people who have been, uh but I've not. Read what, how they placed it.
Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Hopkins or Mr. Hopkins? Do you have anything else for us?
Uh you know, I will go over the rest of my items when we get down to them.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Thank you. At this time, we have a hearing of the public. The public may address the board during the periods of the meeting designated for public participation. We, the Board of Education, do not engage in a public debate, especially do not have a public discussion about individual student situations in the study. Each person addressing the board will give their name and address. Several people wish to speak. Each person has a lot of three minutes until the full time allows. During that period, no person may speak twice until all who desire to speak have the opportunity to do so. The period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the board present in voting. Anyone wish to speak to or address the board? We've all had an opportunity to review the minutes from our special meeting on August eleventh, twenty twenty five, as well as a regular meeting of August twenty fifth of twenty twenty five. All those that approved these minutes say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Minutes are approved. We're going to move on to the treasurer's recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Kreis. Um tonight I have uh ten resolutions. It could probably be a little long. Larger than normal, and uh the oddity here is normally we would spend a lot of time, remember, talking about a budget. Um and uh it because of the danger here, we're spending more time uh regarding the forecast. So the first one, uh five A I have in front of you. It's a pregnant forecast. I think we've discussed it uh at length there, but if you have other questions, please let me know. Uh five B, we have permanent uh appropriations. Uh this is our budget for the new fiscal year. Uh as in the past, I've put together a full packet. And the board has been able to bring that up again uh for YouTube world. Uh it is available on board docs and uh the public content. Uh you can see the full budget, L S C uh separate permanent appropriations uh for this year. So if you have questions regarding the uh budget, uh please let me know. I'm happy to discuss those. The way we break it down is um really the detail when we go through and look at line items. We only look at our stretch spending. Which is our four hundred level, which is purchase services, five hundred level, supplies, materials, six hundred level, uh capital outlay, and then your eight and nines, which are your. Miscellaneous uh type item. Um. So those are all listed there in full detail, showing, I believe, a three-year history um as well as each account number there. Uh so if you have questions, you know, um then as I move on, C and D are for changes to employment agreement for two of our administrators due to agreements that we had. Regarding licensure or educational uh payment. E is uh, and I did this a couple of years ago. I'd like to make sure that I'm in the process each year is, we've got a lot of classified staff and hours changed all the time. Or changes the new year, uh year that started. So this is a listing of all of our classified staff and uh their their current. Uh number of months and then their hour uh hours per day. Uh I would ask the board to approve this, and then any changes going forward, we'll come back to the board to uh add changes if that need arises throughout. Uh F is then and now, uh if you have questions on those, please let me know. Uh I have, E is transferring funds uh for the school uh youth agreement. That we do each year. I have H is returning, excuse me, returning all of the advances that we did at the end of uh June. This is instead of uh. We're returning it back to general fund. Uh as you know, I can't end the fiscal year in the negative on any of my funds, so we advanced. Four hundred and some thousand dollars, and so they're listed there showing you how those advances were made, asking those to. I is a little bit different. Um I've been notified there is the potential for some unclaimed funds, the name of Westington School District, that's currently being held by the state of Ohio. Uh I've started the claim process on that, but in order to file the claim, I need authority under the board uh to uh be directed as the one who's able to file it. So uh if you'd be so kind to allow me uh the authority to file the claim on behalf of the district, uh the money would, uh any money that is owed to the district would come back to the district. Um and we'll have to figure out why it's unclaimed and then uh where we would receive it to. Uh the intent is always to put it back into the fund where it originally came out of, so we'll have to try to do.
You don't know the amount?
Uh unfortunately, we don't get full details on that. I think we. So. And then the last one is uh declaring a transition practical. These are some new students um that have. Have been added to uh the district roles since a last meeting. So this is from transportation director. So um I have ten items there. I would appreciate um, I think, breaking it down. Um I do like to do the forecast separate. So if we could do five A by itself, um I also like to do the uh budget separate, so five B by itself, but then I think we can combine. C through J if it so pleases the board.
There are motions to approve treasurer's recommendation five A.
So I'll move.
Second. Discussion.
Thank you for all the time and preparing the forecast and all the voice.
Certainly, and I want to stress, of course, I know the board knows this, but but anyone who watches this, if you have questions on our forecast, on our budget, please, 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 please read them. I'm happy to discuss it with anyone um and and go through it, uh but please feel free to look at it and and ask questions.
I know you've mentioned that in the past, and you've been very open in the past, present, or I know you will be, so so thank you for that. Always open your door to anyone in that area. Uh further comment?
I wish there was a way somehow on the forecast and probably not on the state format that we could disclose that money that we've transferred into the. That we could disclose that money that we've transferred into that capital improvement, so it's not like we're trying to hide money.
Sure.
Just to make it a little more transparent.
And that's a a very, very valid point. Um if you would like. Um, I can make, I can note it on our assumptions. The state format is the state format that gets uploaded and put on the the web uh the state website, so I can't. Necessarily change that, but I can put a section on it. Let me do that with other funds, so I'm happy to add that. Yes.
Yep.
Yep, I will add a note regarding the O seventy fund. Um, uh to note that we, when we move the money in, what our plan for is the money, and then if the board chooses at some point to rescind it, then we can.
So your opinion of that, that's the thing to do, so we'll do it.
I think it is, you know, again, um we have other funds. There's, you know, we we talk about in our assumptions, I I talk about our. Food service fund, our permanent improvement fund, so it would make sense.
And I'd say I uh I agree, it's even more transparent. I think we've been transparent because we had an open discussion for anybody.
We got.
It's even more.
We, yeah, correct. We have been very transparent about it, but this would would make it more transparent and we'll hold that transparency going forward.
Uh, further comment on five A? Roll call?
I'm going to say if it's okay, that's uh approving five A with an amendment to the assumption noting the O seventy fund. The capital improvement. Alright. Was it?
Yes.
Benukin?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Turn on.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I move to approve treasurer's recommendation five B, the resolution to adopt the fiscal year twenty sixth permanent appropriations. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
I was really hoping you wanted to go through each line item. No. Craft?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Benukin?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Was it?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Your motion to approve treasurer's recommendations five B through five J.
So moved.
Second. Question?
Congratulations to Adam and Quentin.
He's a J or K? Pardon?
J.
It's a J.
Hey, I heard J.
Oh, is it a K?
Good J.
It's a J.
Is there a K on the?
No, I only have a J.
Well, that's good. Further discussion? Roll call?
Turn up?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Nukin?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Listen to you.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We're going to move on, Dr. Goggins, to the superintendent's recommendation.
But um I have about one, so I am going to uh chunk them into some different categories and if you have questions, feel free to ask. Um, first one and six A is a resolution to accept gift and gift and donations. Um, we have an anonymous donor donating three thousand dollars to the athletic department at Westlake High School. We have Swati Desai uh donated school supplies valued at a hundred and fifty dollars to the first and second grade students at Westlake Elementary. Uh Judith Rotkus donated five hundred dollars to the Frank Sarna Scholarship Fund at Westlake High School. Uh Stickier Bun Bakery donated a cookie cake valued at eighteen dollars to the Board of Education, which we appreciated. Um, and John Vander Tille donated ten basketballs valued at three hundred and ninety dollars. To the athletic department at Westlake High School. Uh we thank everyone for their generosity. And putting these together, so letters begins. Our department-specific items in regard to planning policies and procedures. Letters E, F, and G, as you look at those. Are classified specific items uh in regard to either salary increase or hiring. Um or some work-related items in there. Letters H through M. Those are approving extra services that could include detention monitor. Um supplementals, uh and and an extended day for a certified employee. So that's what you're going to see in H through M. Letters N, O, and P are in regard to athletics. It could be a supplemental contract, event workers. Um or student workers for the athletic department. That's letter P. And then letter Q is a resolution to approve employment for project link. Letter R is a resolution to approve an overnight field trip for Science Olympiad. And then the last two F and E are amendments to previous resolutions. Um in regard to my recommendations. As always, approving six A on its own to recognize those who donate to the schools would be appropriate. The rest are very easily combined. Um letters B through. And I could take any questions up.
Everyone okay with if we uh when we approve or not to go through uh six B through E?
Yeah.
Uh there. A motion to approve superintendent's recommendation sixteen. Second.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Always. Thank you, thank you, thank you to our generous community.
For the anonymous donor for the athletics department, was it three grand for anything in particular or just?
Don't believe so. I don't think that was earmarked to a specific item.
Further discussion? Roll call?
Was it? Benukin?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I move to approve superintendent's recommendation six B through six E. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you for the time for the update on the uh district plan, uh the district panel for title one and for specialized policy and while that takes time.
Looking forward to see how the uh. Swiss Olympia turns out. Great kids.
Further discussion? Roll call?
Craft?
Yes.
Was it?
Yes.
Benukin?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, we have a second hearing of the public. The public may address the board during the periods of meeting designated for public participation. We, Board of Education, do not engage in public debate, especially do not have a public discussion about individual student situations in the setting. Each person addressing the board shall give their name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person has a lot of three minutes. Full time allotted as you. During that period, no person may speak twice until all who desire to speak have the opportunity to do so. Period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the board president voting. Anyone wish to address the board at this time? We're going to move on to board comments.
Did something happen to some of the lights at the elementary school?
We said.
Inside, outside.
Inside with print crackers blowing. Controls that had a voltage situation uh. I had a comment about something was like you're ready to work, so that they had light, but like. What? Yeah, they had lights, but it was, yeah. Thank you. Oh, how's the uh? Entranceway at at DIS, is that?
Finally done.
Yeah, so I actually went there today and and used my card, D I S, yeah. Yeah, it worked. They still have um. I would say some trim work, like you could see the wires up on on top of it still. They still need to put the casing on and do a little bit, but um it worked. Uh. I I went and I used my uh um what was interesting is, you know, the outer door is working as the typical outer door has been. But then when you go to the inner door, it disengages like if you're going into the elementary where you have to be patient with it. So they seem to be different, like one clicked right away and then the other one has that slow release. Um it's a little bit to get used to, but. It's working.
We mentioned it before, but uh Dr. Goggins is receiving an award from. Bassett to receive the twenty twenty five Buckeye Association of School Administrators Exemplary Leadership Award, and I know that representative. Uh Bassett will be here on uh I think it's the twenty seventh of October.
Or next.
That that board, it does coordinate. Um I will miss that, but um again, congratulations to you. Dr. Goggins mentioned that uh uh there there was uh Thomas with regard to our calendar. And I know uh that the leadership is working on the calendar uh for the next couple of school years, but it's good to see here. I always uh like when our leadership uh uh boards do uh the board report newsletter. It's a lot, a lot of content there and um so many doing so much uh for the overall district. One of the things that I'm going to pick out is the counselor newsletter and uh it's reading through those. Those newsletters uh to the families in the district and it's a great, great ideas with regard to, hey. What's going on with your student? What's going on at home? What's going on with your family? Is there any gauge to? How much of that is is put into practice, you know? I mean, just a lot of great content in your counsel, so I just want to say thank you. Good, good, good things going on in our.
I had the pleasure of attending a number of meetings since our last uh board meeting or work session. Uh attended the music booster meeting last week. Uh very exciting uh to see them out on the field and. Also, uh you know, everything that they're doing. Uh they've got a lot of great things happening uh with the music booster. They're also constantly looking for volunteers to work the concession stand. So putting that out there, visit the uh uh. The website and uh they'd be more than happy to have you help out uh with regards to uh manning a position at the the concession stand. Having done it, uh you know, I cooked some hot dogs that share a couple last year, so.
Go to the website and.
Go to the website and they've got a whole slew of dates. Doesn't have to be a Friday night. It could be the any of the sporting events that we have here for Westlake uh city schools, so. They're always looking for volunteers. I attended the D I F, the D I F P T A meeting uh last week and uh Mr. Miller did make a comment that uh he's excited about the door and uh the fact that it's in there and it's working and it's doing its job. Um, this had quite the meaning. They hold their meetings um. Uh at a local establishment so that afterwards there's karaoke, so it was a funny thing. Um but I did uh unfortunately miss the both the high school and the L B M S uh P T A meetings last week, which I'll try to make it through at the next month. Um, one question, and I apologize, Mr. or Dr. Goggins, that I didn't get a chance to email you. Um but uh we had a student athlete uh break his wrist, had a eighth grade football game last week in Buckeye. And it presented a interesting situation where they didn't have a trainer uh at the game. And told uh, you know, our our team that the trainer would be, it would be fifteen minutes away. And thankfully, the student that broke his wrist uh is at the E M P, so was able to kind of. Do his job.
Sure.
Um, but it raised some questions uh in my head, having been there, is to, you know, and. I don't know if it's you, if it's Colin, or who, you know, I could possibly speak with or email. That, you know, when we have student athletes going off to other locations. You know, I know that they've got training or they got boxes with training here and it, you know, but who? Builds that? How often do they check it? What material is there in there? Is it something that U H does as part of our new partnership with them or continuing partnership with them? Um, but also, Julian, I thought that I wanted to mention.
That's one of the the the, that was a big deal for us, not necessarily the boxes, but getting that availability. Because um. We weren't, uh many districts don't have coverage for middle grades.
Yeah.
And that was something we wanted to bring in and um and I still think they're not as staffed as they want to be, U H being. But I, my understanding is they were focusing on the more contact sports like football to make sure that we have a trainer. On site.
And they have, they've done that. Uh it's been great to see at least at the eighth grade uh games.
We don't want to be in that situation there. If Buckeye's here and one of their kids gets injured, we're not going to tell them someone's fifteen minutes away. We're hopefully going to have that person there.
Exactly. And that's actually, we've had trainers running across the field.
Yeah.
You know, to the uh visitor sideline, but it was just a question I had.
Yep.
Normally, I email beforehand, but.
Yep.
Give you a quick email about that. Um and then also, you know, we've gotten some great press recently um with regards to um. I think there was an article out today that you had forwarded on to us right before the meeting. It's great to see. Westlake being recognized, the school district, uh both uh, you know, in and out of the classroom and. I had a chance to read over the article real quick and it was great to be in. Really focused on the behind the W and all the information that we're able to get out there to the public. It's great to see and then. Think, what was it over the weekend? Uh there was an article about the the taxes and. How Westlake, you know, is on the absolute lowest uh end of that the spectrum when it comes to. You know, going to the community, so it's great to see that we're, you know, started my career with George Voinovich and he always, you know, talked about doing more with less and. Harder, smarter in it and uh, you know, something that it appears that we're really doing here at Westlake High School, so thank you.
While we're talking P T A stuff, um I was at the council meeting, just so people put on their calendars. Founder's Day is going to be February twenty sixth, twenty sixth. Two twenty six, twenty six. Um, my understanding. Oh, my understanding, though, is that it is supposed to be a P T A mom pop rom theme, something along that line with like dance. So you might need to run it times or dust it out. Oh, yes, that would be great with ruffles. So, okay.
So I was approached by a Wesic resident who was on jury duty last week.
Yeah.
And he came up to me and he said, uh apparently you were doing a good job of advertising Wesic because he said. He had, you were the bailiff or whatever, and he he said he had his Wesic landyard on and you also had. A vest or something, a Wesic vest?
It was Thursday, it was. The I was leaving work to go to Buckeye for that football game, uh that's football game.
Well, he was on jury duty and.
I know exactly who you're talking about. No, we've got, actually, uh there's two more of us, the presidents on the the jury. Um, that's the trial is ongoing, which I can't speak about, but uh one of the jurors uh said today that they had received their behind the W. Dance.
Oh, good.
So.
Okay.
Thinking of that and and Paul texted me while uh we were sitting here um is that. Part of our strategic plans, one of the things we heard in our feedback sessions from parents. Is we know we have great kids. We know we're doing, we want to see that more in publications. We want to see it out more. So it's been something we've been pushing and I know that we have an upcoming article in Cleveland Magazine highlighting our new P L T W program. So it's another one that's going to be coming out.
Something I'm starting to see press on from all schools is the eighteen scholars and all. There's so many distinct, all of those different tiers, so make sure we have. A plethora.
I don't know, two weeks.
Okay.
We have all these certain. Listeners on.
Yeah. I know some places have names listed and, you know, even if it's just sort of like, however, numbers, just. Something to think about.
Absolutely, yeah. I just, talking about U H, um, you know, it's right here in the community and sometimes we like take it for granted, but. You know, this hospital right here in Westlake, Ohio, and just to hear really how good it is, the service that they provide and. Uh there are competitors out there in the next city over that uh that can't provide healthcare many times. From that institution or other institutions, those folks are brought back here to Westlake to. Um our local hospital because uh it's so good and I know we have a uh obviously a good uh schools relationship. With uh U H, um I know uh uh Rotary, we we partner with U H. As well, the schools and U H. Um, uh I I know from, say, an internship point of view or services point of view, we have that partnership. Um, U H is constantly trying to. Uh, U H is constantly trying to get better and better through its western campus. Um, I know that we, uh, work along with them with our community involvement group, the board has a presence with, with that group as well. Um, I know that they have a major initiative, uh, coming up, I, I believe it's November. Um, to, uh, interact with the community, to raise funds, those types of things. Uh, but do we as a board have any interest in, say, participating in that? I don't leave an answer today, but, uh, to that. Or information?
Taste of Westlake.
Well, Les and I have been talking about that.
Working on.
Yeah.
Working on the whole committee for citizens for Westlake, working on all that.
Okay, so it unlikely that we'll have one this year?
Well, no, we'll do, I think we're targeting spring, aren't we? We're talking about fall, but I think.
At this point, it's false.
Yeah, we're looking at.
Right, we're, yeah, we're trying to have something.
I just want to emphasize again how important it is that continue that.
Working on getting the team together.
Okay.
And spring works for your firm mind, do you think that would be good?
I, I, whatever, I just think that we should try to have it annually.
Crush, that's the goal, and to get an entire team together, so. Already got one person for one role, but not for taste, but working on.
Further board comments?
Rob's with these out there, uh, just, uh, according to the Wikipedia page, Travis, people, Travis was actually born in Westlake.
Yeah.
On Wikipedia.
Yeah.
There you go.
It must be Saint John.
Further?
We'll talk about.
Further board comments? There are most to adjourn.
I'm on.
Second.
Question? Roll call?
Return at seven seventeen P M? Was it?
Yes.
Benugan?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Turn on.
Yes.
Motion carries. Turn on.